We've been five o'clock, we're going to call a meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Maurer.
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Breeden?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Okay, approving the agenda with the pulling of items five, six, seven, and eight.
I -- Because we don't have an agenda yet, because of the timeframe, we're a week ahead of the GSA and six, seven, and eight, illness in the family, and Lauren is not able to be here.
I'd like to also pull item 10.
I second the motion.
Me. Are we allowed to ask questions, why?
Well, we were going to go ahead and I said, let's separate them, because I don't want to not approve pulling five, six, seven, and eight if we want to discuss 10. Does anybody have any problem with that?
I think we have to pull all items and approve the agenda at the same time.
Okay, well then we can do each one separately. Okay, pulling item number five. Motion?
Move. Are we doing this?
No, let's just go ahead and do the roll call vote, because there's going to be too many of them.
Okay.
So I need a second on item five.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number six.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Number seven.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, Lindsey asked for us --
You got number eight?
Number eight.
I'm sorry, I did do that. Item number eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next one, Lindsey, do you want to address that, please?
Yes. It just seems to me that this discussion of this item is premature, as we have sent letters asking the Department of Interior for clarification on the mandatory decision, and we've been advised that the mandatory action of the land being in the trust is not in the city's favor. And so since we're representing the city, we should do what's in the best interest of the city. And in addition, the item is listed as a discussion item, so no action can be taken. So it seems like --
Well, it does say discussion and other action items.
The item itself is listed as a discussion item.
Okay, I asked for the item to be on the agenda. I think it's inappropriate for someone to say you don't want to have that. If you choose to say that, I certainly understand it, but I would, I want some direction. I think it's appropriate to ask for direction. I was asked to go, I said I want council's approval or disapproval. I wanted to bring it to council.
But we can't give you that if it's listed as a discussion item.
Madam Mayor, may I weigh in on that?
Please.
Okay, so this is a very close call. The, we're talking about notice under the Brown Act. The Brown Act requires that notice be given of actions on the agenda. To me, this, the description of item 10 is very, very clear. It describes exactly what the request is. It describes that the mayor is seeking, that it's about meeting with the Department of the Interior specifically to support the project. So there's much in there that's very clear. However, on a very technical, nitpicky way of looking at it, and by the way, I do agree with you also, that the heading is discussion and other action items, which suggests that they're all action items, including the ones that are, that say discussion. So I agree with you on that as well. However, because item five specifically says discussion and provide direction, it is very likely that if this were challenged, someone, a judge might look at number 10 and say, well, you, we clearly only stated discussion and not provide direction. So it's possible that someone could complain, could challenge the action as not having been given proper notice.
Can we have discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you want to pull it with no discussion?
I just think if we want to do this item, there's no timeline associated with this, because they've asked, they asked Ron back in November, so there's obviously not a deadline of needing to go to DC next week or something like that. So if we want to put it back on another agenda, but it just --
I think because it's been so well advertised by both the pro and the con people, I think it would be inappropriate to ask those people who are going to come out, because we're not going to discuss it. I think we need to be what, do what's fair to the public who are going to attend the meeting, given the idea that we are going to discuss it. It seems inappropriate to say, I'm sorry, we changed our mind.
Well, as far as extensive advertising, I think it's been five days or something. That email just came out, basically, to my knowledge. So I don't think it's extensive advertising on this, it was more of a last minute deal. The second thing is, we also have an issue with our special contract attorney, who also states that we have about, we have numerous issues, four, I contend there's probably seven significant MSA issues, that could be potential breaches in our contract, things that have to be addressed before we go forward. We had to approve something that sends, that says that you should go with a yes vote, when in fact the council is divided, the public's divided, we have two attorneys having questions, another lawsuit was just filed by Mr. Neal and several other concerned citizens, plus we had 800 signatures originally to begin with, plus we have other council members to know for you, for to approve, since they're lumped together, Mr. Pilkington, they're lumped together. It doesn't say you're going to present a case, it's going to present a case and support. So there is no way in the world, with what the things I just said, that I would begin to even, I think that discussing it is premature. And then certainly to work this to where it ends up with a vote of some sort, to say that we're voting to send you to, with a yes vote, I think involves the litigious issues and every other thing, because it's false representation.
I think, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, I do not, I'm voting, I second it, so it's clear that we pull it for right now. The attorney has said before, and she stated, our special attorney --
I would ask the council member to not state in open session what is discussed in closed session.
We do have a motion and a second, we can take a vote on removing it from the agenda at this point. Are we ready?
I would like to, I would like to make a comment. If support is simply reiterating whereas, 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 and whereas, that was what I was asked to do. I am not going there to argue in favor of it. I'm not going there, I'm simply reiterating what the council proved. Our word either means something, or it doesn't. We are legitimate government who said yes. There were two that were against it, I understand.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. If I may, I would ask that we limit the topic to, should it be on the agenda or not?
Okay.
We have a motion and a --
I fear that we're going into actual substance.
We have a motion and a second.
All right.
May I ask a question real quick, Mr. Attorney? Because I'm, I'm in this limbo spot, and I'm trying to figure out which way to vote. And I think the vote is extremely critical, not only for the council, but for the community. So the reason why I asked for, can we discuss it? And if we can, if we can channel it in a way that we talk about, should we or should we not, can we have that discussion before we just do the vote?
You mean right now?
Yes, sir.
So discuss what exactly?
Should it be pulled or should it not be pulled? Can we make sure our discussion amongst council is channeled in that way? Is there a way we can constructively have that conversation?
That's the question, is there a way? So the, what we should all be keeping in mind is, are we getting into the substance of the matter?
And I would just say also that we know that this is a very contentious issue, and why would we want to go through all of this two times publicly? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand it.
Because if you have to bring it back for action to be able to actually go, that means it will have to be put on a future agenda again, with that as an action item.
I don't think you can allow the public too much time to speak, too many items. If we're going to limit time, we are probably going to have to, if what I've seen on Facebook, there's going to be hundreds of people here. I'm being, I'm being facetious, but --
But, well, tell me, we have a motion and a second to do. Go any further starts getting into content, and I agree with Mr. Pilkington. We can take a vote as it stands right here.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, then I'm going to abstain.
All right, okay, all right, Eddie, I, okay, well.
And that's going to leave us split again. So.
What happens if we don't approve the agenda?
Okay, so what if we don't approve the agenda? So there's, the way that I'm looking at this is, there's a harsh way to look at it and a practical way to look at it. The harsh, well, first of all, there's nothing in the law that says, the Brown Act doesn't require approval of an agenda. That's from Roberts Rules. So it's really a practical matter of, what do we proceed with if we don't have an approved agenda? So there, as a practical matter, we have to approve an agenda. If there's a split vote and no approval, then the harsh way is, we don't have a meeting. We have to adjourn because nothing, the council has been unable to approve an agenda.
The whole, the whole meeting?
That's one way to look at it. The, a way to get around that would be, if the mayor would say, okay, look, as a practical matter, we want to do our business tonight. So if the only way to do that, to get approval of an agenda, is to remove the contentious item, then that's something that the mayor, you would have the power to make that decision. But without a yes vote on the agenda, there's nothing to move forward on.
What is the direction from the rest of the council? Can I ask that question?
Yeah, I say we just pull the, we don't discuss.
I understand, I know what you said, what you said. I was asking the rest, what is the direction of the rest of the council?
I'm going to vote no on the proposal, because I think we should approve the agenda, and this item has been published, and Wallace can say it's only been on for five days, but five days in Facebook's a long time.
Eddie, do you have anything else to say?
No. I just wanted to be, when I, I thought that possibly our attorney could help us, which he has done such a great job at, jumping in when we get ready to get into trouble.
Thank you for that.
That he could help us, so that we don't do that, and we can have a healthy discussion about the item, because it is critical, because, because we're split. And it's going to split the community. So that, that's my position.
Well, then the challenge is discussing pull or not pull, and not discussing substance. That's the challenge.
Yeah, it is the challenge.
Let's call for the question. Mr. Maurer?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm staying.
Mayor Breeden?
No.
Mr. Martin?
So I'm voting to pull this. A yes vote is to, is to pull the discussion item? Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
We have two ayes, two noes, and an abstain, so we do not have an approved agenda.
And we can't have a meeting? Is that what I understand?
There's no agreement on what to proceed with.
Is that for the, just this item?
For the whole meeting. By abstaining, you threw us into the [inaudible].
I don't know why we can't talk about it.
So what do we tell the public who's coming here tonight to hear what's said?
We can pull the item and put it on the future agenda and still have a meeting. We just pulled, we just pulled three other, four other items that were advertised in the agenda without pause.
But they're not as controversial as the one you're pulling.
Right, I mean, we've pulled items before that have been controversial, and it hasn't been --
These ones that were pulled were not without cause, though, Lindsey.
Well, this is, I'm not proposing this without cause either. I mean, this, to say that my opinion is wrong, or your opinion is wrong, that's not the question here. We each have our own positions, we were each elected to represent our thoughts, and that's what we're doing here. We can still have a meeting if we pull the item.
Not according to Lloyd.
If he just --
Lloyd, can I make another motion?
Absolutely.
I move approval of the agenda with the exceptions of item five, six, seven, and eight.
That was just what we voted on.
We're a stalemate on item 10, so I'm, I'm making motion to approve the agenda with item 10 on it, so we can have a meeting.
The, Mayor Protam Maurer is stating it in a positive way, rather than a vote on pulling, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are we allowed to discuss that too, or no?
Well, that would mean that item 10 stays on.
We can't get into the --
We need a second.
I don't know.
I'll second it.
It's the substance. Mr. Lloyd, can you explain to me what the substance is that's killing us?
I, I only brought it up when I heard what sounded like substance to me. So it's, you know, like the Supreme Court says, I know it when I see it.
That really doesn't help me.
I was going to say, that was a bad one.
I think what Lloyd, I think what, what Mr. Pilkington was trying to say was, is that you were beginning to discuss the merits of whether or not the mayor should go or not go. And that's where we got in trouble.
Correct.
So again, can we have discussion without going into the merits?
Oh, we can try, we can try, and I'll, I'll try to, I will try to do that, yes.
You could discuss the impact this may have on the community, on whether or not you move forward or not.
Correct.
So Councilwoman Stevens and Mr. Martin, can we have that discussion?
I don't think that my comments were getting into substance.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear a problem with your comment.
Mr. Wallace, can we have that discussion? Because I, I would like to know, without the merits, why you want to pull it versus why you would like to, to like to go forward with the meeting, with the agenda item number 10. Is that possible? That's all I'm asking, sir. Without digging into the merits of it.
I, I don't know, please forgive me, but I'm --
Please use your mic, Mr. Martin.
I don't, I, however we twist the turn, I use the microphone.
I need to sit down.
Well, it's on. So, so, Mr. Pilkington, refresh my memory of what we're talking about right here.
The question is whether the agenda should have item 10 on it or not. Whether, whether we're approving, whether the council is approving the agenda with item 10 on it, that's the motion on the floor, I believe.
And so you're asking me, do I want to discuss it further, but without discussing it?
No, I'm not getting into all this.
I'm saying, I've made my statement, and I say no, I want it pulled, and I just don't cancel the agenda if that's, if we can't do that. I don't want to discuss, I just, I don't, I, no.
You said no.
No.
Well, we have a motion in a second.
And still back building the same way.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, taking off five, six, seven, and eight, and we have a second. Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm staying.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Okay, and this is leaving 10 out?
No.
Leaving 10 on.
This would be to approve the agenda with 10 on.
With 10 on, no.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
We have two ayes, two noes, and an abstain. Does not pass.
What is our recourse here, sir?
Madam Mayor, you, you have the ability to decide another way to let the meeting move forward, and I can't advise you on that one way or the other. But if we, but if we, to move forward with the agenda without a vote of approval means there's no meaning to voting to approve the agenda. So there, there can't be a meeting without agreement, a consensus on the agenda. So it would, it would mean adjourning the meeting.
I motion that we approve to go to closed session, and do item one, two, three, four, and 11.
I'll second that motion.
She's made a motion to approve the agenda without item 10.
Without five, six, seven, eight.
Well, you're saying going into closed session to do those items?
I said include closed session.
Oh, okay.
One, two, three, four, nine, and 11.
Isn't that what we just voted on?
No, she's left out 10.
Okay, but that was what they asked before, right? I mean, I'm, I'm --
Oh, Madam Mayor, I believe Councilwoman Stevens has done what Mayor Protam Maurer did, which is to state the motion positively, correct?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Are we, are we allowed to ask questions again, seeing that we're going to do this in a polite way? Can we have that discussion without digging into the merits of it?
I find no reason not to proceed with any of these items.
I agree with Councilwoman Stevens.
So that I'm understanding, Council, Councilwoman, you're talking about the items that you may mention, that one, two, three, four, nine, and 11?
Correct.
Excluding 10?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not, okay.
Okay, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question, if it's wrong, will you share with me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, I'll do my, I'll do my best.
Okay, I'm trying not to sound combative here, I really am, both of you and all of you. But I find it difficult to believe we would not want to hear what the people have to say. Even, because we're not going to decide anything, the idea was a discussion. I just want to give the people the opportunity to speak. I don't know where that's wrong. Okay.
Well, can I talk?
I don't have, I don't have the power to say who can talk.
You can only talk about --
I think it's inappropriate and wrong for the chief, for the, for the tribe and the chief to have asked you to do this in the first place. I think it's kind of wrong that we even entertained it and should have said it was inappropriate to begin with. Three, it was just put on the agenda, boom, kind of at the tribe's request. And I, I, I think there's lots of things that are wrong here, Madam Mayor. I, I just, there's lots of things that are wrong here. It's not a matter of keeping things from the people, it's a matter of orchestrating something that shouldn't be on there to begin with.
And actually, I would also state that the public, there is still time for public comment on items not on the agenda, so if those people all showed up, they would still be permitted to share their comments.
Let me, let me state something for the record. At the EOC meeting, Mr. Golson came to me and said, would you be willing to go to Washington with us? Can I say this?
Please be careful.
Lord, you think we were talking about life and death here? Okay, I, I came, I said to Ron, I said to him, please talk to Ron. Ron came back to me, and he said he's asking for it. And I said, well then, let's put it on the agenda and see what the council has to say. That afternoon, he came by my office. I was just getting ready to go to an infrastructure meeting, and I said, I don't have time to talk, I've already talked to Ron. That's it. So now I don't understand why it is inappropriate, one, for me to have talked to him, why I'm at fault for doing so, and why it's okay for other people to talk to other people, but I can't? Help me understand that, please.
Well, basically, we just, we have a motion here, I, we're getting into substance and stuff, we all can understand it as of this point.
Well, I thought the attorney was going to determine whether or not we were getting into substance.
That was substance.
That, that was risked being substance. I, I liked the way the mayor started, first of all, this is a very difficult position for me to monitor every word, okay? In real time, because I can't rewind.
What do we want to erase that I said?
I can't, I can't rewind and say, no, you shouldn't have said that.
You were recording this, I hope so. Thank you very much, make sure it's running.
So the, the, at the start of the mayor's comments, the mayor was talking about how it got on the agenda, which seemed relevant to me. Okay?
And where did I go off how it got on the agenda?
Well, I'd, I'd rather not say on the record what's --
Oh, Lord.
Okay, all right, all right. So I, I, I assume that I will support the fact of --
We do have a motion on the table for closed session, one, two, three, four, nine, and 11. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Maurer?
On principle, I'm voting no.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Breeden?
How long do I have while I'm praying here? It sounds like I'm being facetious, but I truly am not, because I do not feel --
We're losing our whole closed session time on this. Of course, if we're not going to have a meeting, it doesn't matter.
I guess I can't talk.
Can I, can I say something with a qualifier, sir?
No, you need to vote.
You can say, he voted, he said no on principle, you can say I vote this way because, whatever.
I'm going to say yes on this premise. If we can't do that, then I want to know now, because I'm going to change my vote. I want it before the people, I want the people to be able to speak, and I want it on the next agenda with discussion and approval or disapproval. I, I hate the idea that we're going to have all these people show up, we're going to say, sorry, you don't matter.
That's not --
And I'm, I know, I'm being facetious, I'm sorry, Lindsey, and I'm sorry, Wallace, I apologize to both of you.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
We have --
And, by the way, I'll add a comment. I do fully always want to hear from the public, and we will have public comment session, and any comment still can be heard.
We have four yeses and one no, motion is carried.
Five minutes on closed session. So everyone will be held to the five minutes exactly, which is only fair.
We need public comment on closed session.
Sorry. I guess I prayed too long. Okay, public comment for closed session. I see none.
Well, oh, there.
Well, is there any?
No.
Okay. All right, we will then go to closed session.
Go fast, because a half an hour is now gone.
Join for the pledge, please. And, Mike, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the prayer, please.
Please bow with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for bringing us all here this evening, and we pray for those that are not here, that you would keep them all healthy, happy, and safe from sickness or harm, Lord. We pray for those that are here. We pray for wisdom, Lord, and we pray for love to show to one another. And we pray that we could have a good meeting, and we would make good choices for our city. And we love you and pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you. Please be seated.
Are we doing these things?
We're gonna come to the attorney's report first. Okay, we are going to have a report from our attorney. Let's wait until we get everybody in here so we can tell them all what's happening. Is there any, anybody else out there waiting? Okay, Floyd, would you proceed, please?
Madam Mayor, four items were discussed in closed session. They are identified on the agenda. In the case of all four items, direction was given to staff. No final action was taken. The city council approved tonight's agenda without items 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to come to presentations, those of us-
Mayor Breeden.
Rick, which ones are here?
Actually, none of them have showed, so if you would just like to read their names and their years.
Okay, then let's, let's start. Lindsey, would you go first, please?
Yes. This is a recognition of service. This certificate is awarded to Officer Eric Clinton in recognition of five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. And Officer Clinton was just awarded at our last meeting, one of this awards for life-saving. So, thank you, Officer Clinton.
Mr. Martin.
All right. This certificate is awarded to Catherine Lauren in recognition of 10 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. Catherine, congratulations to you.
I'd like to make two presentations. The first one is to Les Wood, who is in our Public Works Department, and he has 30 years of service. So, thank you, Les. He is in his home of Scotland right now, so he's not here. The second one is Roger Zeisler. Did I say that correctly? And he has 10 years of service in the city of Ridgecrest, and frankly, I don't know what department he's in. Would someone share that with me?
He's in Public Works, I believe.
Public Works, too. All right. Thank you to both of them.
This is in recognition of Sandra Montoya for 10 years of service here in the city of Ridgecrest, and thank you for your service and dedication in making this city great. Congratulations.
This is recognition of service. It's typically awarded to Severn Grous. He serves Lloyd.
Attorney Michael.
Recognition of service for 15 years of service by Severn Grous. He serves in the wastewater department, and congratulations on 15 years of service.
We're very proud of all our employees, and especially those who have served so long and so well for this community, so we thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we go to public comment, I would like to make this comment. Item 10 was pulled from the agenda upon a vote, and so if you wish to make public comment on any items not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. You are limited to five minutes, one time up. So those of you who would like to make public comment, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. So the limits are five minutes, one hour total. Please come forward and identify yourself.
My friends, hello. I'm Skip Gorman, a resident of Ridgecrest. I came here tonight to listen about item number 10, as did, I think, many others. I observe that as this particular item comes up in the past, and now it's, it's pulled. We only learn about it at the last minute.
So did you-
I worry that it's some sort of administrative bullying. I expected that even if you have, are in some legal straitjacket whereby you can't talk about why it was pulled, I would expect even an awkward, slightly embarrassed explanation. Just for instance, Chief Golson and his wife Denise, they drive all the way down from Perump, hokey smokes. That's off-putting to find as you walk in, it's been pulled. Give me a break. I'm asking that at least we are given the respect of an explanation, except to say, "In closed session, we voted and pulled it." That's not enough.
We didn't pull it in closed session, sir. We pulled it in open session at 5:00, when two members made a motion to pull it. That is part of the record. And-
Was there anybody besides you in this room when that happened?
Yes, sir. There was about three or four people out here.
I'm not usually outraged. I'm only slightly so now. But I expect to see a little more civility on our part.
I wish I could offer that to you, sir. But it was a motion. It was approved, and we went through about 15 minutes of discussion.
My goodness, I'm so sorry I missed it.
I am sorry too, sir. Thank you.
If indeed it was significant, and I've overstepped my bounds here, I sincerely apologize.
You have not. You are entitled to your public comment, and thank you for doing so, and thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Suzette Coffield, and I'm the CEO of the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce. Couple months ago, I came forward and announced that the Chamber, the RACBB, and the IWVEDC were working together to put together a community event calendar that would be available for all to enter and submit events, and a place that everybody could go to find out what's happening in the community. This weekend, at the home show, we presented it to the attendees there and got a very positive response from everybody. This website is ridgecrestevents.com. All you have to do is, on your phone, your computer, your tablet, pull up ridgecrestevents.com on your browser, and you'll be able to access by date, by type of event, the type of events that are available. I have business cards here that have some information on them. The Chamber is a part of the coalition that has brought this to you, and we will be doing training over the next three months for anybody or any group that would like to know how to submit to the website, or how to use it if you have a question on how to use it. If you have any questions, please contact the Chamber, and we'd be happy to help you. Again, this is a community calendar that will allow all to enter events that are for the community as a whole. We'll also be listing places to go that are nearby. There are certain venues that are set up, so you can look and see what's happening at the fairgrounds. There's a lot that still needs to be added, and because this is a community calendar, we're hoping the community will support it by taking the time to submit your events in there, so we all can enjoy the meetings, the dinners, the auctions, the fundraisers. All of those will be in there. I'll leave business cards out for people, and if you'd like to pick some up and share them, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzette. I saw it, and a number of businesses that I deal with have already told me how wonderful they thought it was and how informative, so I thank you. Please, next.
Good evening. I'm Scott Leahy. The reason I'm up here right now is that I've kinda gotten a little familiar with the provisions of the Brown Act over, over time here, observing the workings of our city council. And anyway, if this is correct, I am not seeing a clear path for this council to have taken the action that it took. You cannot exclude the public from meetings of this body, except under a certain set of narrow circumstances. Those circumstances involve license renewal, criminal records, price and payment terms in a contract, to confer with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, situations where the physical security of the city may be impacted because of release of information, consider employment or employment reviews for salary, for salary negotiations and things like that where the city may end up compromising its bargaining positions, for sale of land and price negotiations. Now, those seem to be a fairly narrow, narrow window of opportunity to take something that you don't wanna talk about in front of people, Mr. Martin, that you don't wanna speak to in front of these people, and want to go back in the back room and talk about it. Now, what I would like to know is, was there a Brown Act violation tonight with this impromptu, apparently 3 to 2 decision to take this off the record? And that's really a question for our attorney. But anyway, I'm gonna also lend my voice to my friend, Mr. Gorman. We have had multiple instances down here of people who have taken time off, who have left other meetings, compromised other things in their life, to come down here and then have stuff yanked off, yanked off the schedule, or some other machinations. It is unseemly, and this should be done out in the open. That's my comment, and I really do have an official inquiry to whether the Brown Act was violated in this action tonight. Thank you.
Sir, let me say, nothing was done in, Scott, nothing was done in closed session.
This was done in open session. We started our meeting at 5:00. We approved the agenda, and then we go into closed session items.
This, the item was not discussed in closed session. Is that correct?
It was not.
That's correct. It was discussed out in the-
Thank you very much. Okay.
And it was a split vote.
So we did not talk about this back there. That was, so that is my misunderstanding, and I retract that. I thought that this item had been taken back to closed session to discuss. Very good. Okay, thank you so much.
Lloyd, can you share the circumstances so that-
Absolutely, Madam Mayor.
-the public is concerned? Can we answer the, how this happened?
Yes, thank you. So, as the council members stated, this was not, this, item 10 was not moved into closed session.
Thank you.
What did happen was, what happens at every meeting, which is, every meeting begins with approval of the agenda. And that is the opportunity for the council to have a consensus on how it will proceed. So it's very common that the council wants to proceed with items removed from the agenda, and that's exactly what happened here. There was a vote to proceed with four items removed. That vote, a majority of the, of the council voted to proceed that way, and that's what happened.
I mean, may I add, because it's all on the record?
Please.
May I add that there was three different, it might, help me if I'm wrong, there was three different motions. One, to remove those items. No, first, let me start over.
About a half a dozen.
Okay. All right, a half a dozen motions. What it came down to was, we couldn't come to a decision because it was a tie vote, 2-2, and an abstention. So as it stood, we either had to approve that as it was, or we would not have a meeting because we could not approve the agenda. So it came back then, Mr. Mauer, I think, made the last motion.
No, I did not.
Lindsey, Lindsey, I'm sorry. Lindsey made the motion.
I made the tie motion.
See, there was way too many motions. Lindsey made the motion that we take off only item, items 4, 5, 5, the, the-
5, 6, 7.
5, 6, 7, and 8, and leave 10 on.
No. I made the motion to leave 10 on. She made the motion.
Somebody tell me what happened.
We can have Rika read the motion.
Just the last one. Ms. Stevens asked to approve the agenda with closed session, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 9, and 11. The motion was seconded by Mr. Martin, and the motion carried by a roll call vote of four ayes, one no by Mr. Mauer.
Okay, and I obviously was the deciding vote.
No.
It was 4 to 1.
All four of you voted.
But had I voted-
It was still passed.
It still would have-
It was passed 3 to 2, if you'd voted no.
Okay.
We either, we were faced with either approving the agenda with item 10 pulled, or not having a meeting at all, and that's what-
That was the point. That was what I'm trying to say.
That's what they were forced to do. On principle, I voted against that. Peggy and I were both in favor of leaving item 10 on the agenda, but we got outvoted.
And we wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to speak. I felt like you were coming, am I wrong in saying this? I felt like you came to be heard. We wanted to hear you. Okay, is there any other questions on that?
Mine.
Okay.
We're still doing public comment.
Right.
Now, we're still on public comment.
Madam Mayor, if we may, if I may just emphasize what Councilmember Stevens said, which is that everyone can be heard at public comment.
That's right. That's, and that was why I announced that just a few minutes ago. Okay.
Hi there. My name's Scott Miller. My address is on file. I think we just covered this, but I wanna be crystal clear. I wanna make sure that I understand it for future, for future reference. City council meeting starts at what time?
5:00.
Okay.
That varies by, by meeting time, depending on the start of the closed session and how many items are on the closed session.
Okay.
But it goes by the agenda, what is posted on the agenda, which was 5:00.
Which is posted online.
Yes.
Okay, so in order to find out what time city council starts, one needs to go to the website to find out what time it starts?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it varies sometime between 5:00 and 6:00, and then goes into closed session?
Regular session will always start at 6:00. Closed session is prior to the meeting and can start any time 3, 4, 5:00, depending on how many items are on the agenda and how long they need.
I think that's the part that I was unaware of. I don't know many other people were unaware of that, that council starts at 6:00, and that's where I think some of the confusions come into tonight, is council comes in at 6:00. I was out there this evening and saw you guys out here. I'm like, "Well, what's going on?" And I didn't realize that there was a, I'm gonna call it a pre-vote, of what's gonna be on the agenda?
Approval of the agenda.
Approval, pre-vote, okay. So that goes in, that happens sometime between 3:00 and 6:00, depending on what, how many is on the agenda, and then the meeting starts again at 6:00.
Whatever is posted on the agenda, on the website and on here, is when we will start.
Okay.
And so we can't tell you the time until we have, we see how many closed session items there are.
Between noon and 5:00. Let's go with that.
Thank you, sir.
The municipal code states that the regular session of city council will start at 6:00.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The municipal code states that the regular session of city council will start at 6:00.
Okay.
If they're gonna have a closed session prior to the meeting, that can start at any time, depending on the amount of items on closed session.
And the session, and anything that's be pulled, whether it be item 10 or anything else that happens to be on there, would be decided during that?
At the-
At the-
3, 4, 5:00, depending on what time, because that's when they call the agenda, yes.
So wouldn't it be- So, wouldn't it be worthwhile, as soon as that stuff is pulled, to notify the appropriate parties, so that some people are driving six, nine?
Sir, how, how would you suggest we do that? Because if you've got a better idea than I'm saying, I don't know how we notify everybody 45 minutes before, and if you've got a great idea, let me know. Let us all know.
Madam Mayor, not, not just, not everybody, but the parties involved. Today, it happens to be the Tembisha Tribe. If they were notified, again, they drove four hours to be here.
They would have been on the road, though, because we did it at 5:15, 5:30.
So, it would have been nice.
I'll make sure that in the future, if we pull an item, and I know somebody is specifically tell, wants, wants information on it, if you will give your email to Ricka, we'll email you as soon as we make that decision. Ricka, is that okay with you to make that?
I will do my best.
Okay. That's the best we can do.
I understand, and that's fair. It's just, there's a lot of people involved and a lot of, Mr. Martin.
Scott, I agree with that. I, I had to drive to Bakersfield once or twice on the pot issue, and we got there, and everybody was prepared, and I spent the whole day making notes and everything. We rolled in, and boom, some guy said something, boom, and 150 people left. So, I, I got it. I don't know what to, it's, it's an inherent issue, period, with government. You understand? So, I feel your pain, but I don't know what to do about it.
Well, I think that Madam Mayor has addressed the issue, sir. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Stan Raturra. My first comment is actually a question. I was curious whether or not the Navy has gotten back to us regarding the wastewater treatment plant?
Ron?
Not yet. We should have an answer next week.
Not yet. Okay. The rest of my comments actually deal with the city budget and the finance committee. About two years ago, we spent about three quarters of a million dollars to improve our finance system. I was hoping with that, that we would get budget data that was more like what we got six, seven, eight, nine years ago, with information at the department, the division, and the project level. Unfortunately, at the last finance committee meeting, there was a abbreviated, basically top-level finance printout, and then a detailed abbreviated summary finance printed, printout. None of the data was, was actually looking at the department, division, or, or project level. The detailed readout or printout gave a lot of minutia down at levels that wouldn't allow anybody to make any assessment of where we are with regard to the budget, except at the most global level. But I would like to give you my, my take from at least that global level. If you look at page 32 of the detailed printout, you'll note that we have authorized expenditures of essentially $16 million in the budget, and the income revenue for this year is expected to be 14.8, which puts the city $1.2 million in the red. At the end of the first quarter, if you look back at the first quarter summary, we were in the red, but only, only $300,000. So, in the meantime, between the first quarter and the second quarter, we went an additional $900,000 in the red. Now, I'm not saying anything that was done was wrong, but I think before we go into the red over a million dollars, I would kind of expect to see the council have a discussion on whether or not we really want to spend 80% of our current reserve in one year. Another thing that I noticed was, in the gas tax, the gas tax fund expenditures, there was no detailing of where the Measure V expenditures went. In the last year's budget, it turns out that there were expenditures that were wholly inappropriate for Measure V funding. They had to go back and be corrected. I assume that they were, but nonetheless, it was totally ignored this time. You couldn't tell where the Measure V funding went in the gas tax fund, and that, I think, needs to be corrected. On page 51, it turns out that transfers into Fund 410, which is the insurance fund, appear to be the exact numbers that were given back in October that were determined to be incorrect. And so, we're still using incorrect numbers to the tune of anywhere from 800 to a million dollars, 800,000 to a million dollars. I, I know that the city manager is working on trying to figure out what, what happened, but it is three months later, and we still don't have any idea what's going on with regard to that, those transfers. Lastly, the transfers into the fleet maintenance ISF funds indicate that they sum up to $504,000. And yet, if you, if you look at what actually goes into the fleet maintenance fund, pardon me, transferred out of other funds, they're supposed to go into that fund, it ends up, it is $610,000. So, there's a $100,000 difference between what's taken out of all the other funds to go into the ISF fund, and what is actually getting into the ISF fund. So, there's, there's a number of, I think, issues in, in the finance area right now that the whole council, rather than just the finance committee, need to be involved in. And so, I would hope that this would be on your agenda in the, in next coming future. There's only so many months left of the fiscal year.
Can I add a comment? I just wanted to say, Ms. Sloan has responded to all of your concerns. I just looked in my emails, so.
I saw them also. Did you see it?
She just did so, I think, today.
I have, no, I, I looked late in the afternoon. I hadn't seen anything.
I saw quite a long article.
It was at 5:40, so.
Okay. Well, in any event, I think, I think it should be a discussion item of the council, not just the finance committee, because these are, these are not small issues.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Matthews, still, and my address is still on file. About three weeks, three months ago, excuse me, or four, maybe even, I noticed that the lid on my green recycling trash can was starting to split crosswise. This was the second barrel that I had had that happen to. The other one was about, I don't know, a year and a half, maybe, or two years ago. So, as of about three weeks ago, I decided, it's getting bigger. I'm going to call waste management and request a replacement. So, I did that. On the day after the pickup, which is Tuesday for my place, my residence, and I talked to the guy, and he said, okay, put it out at the regular time for your pickup. And I was left with the impression that they were, the driver, or somebody coming along with the driver, would dump it and replace it with a new one. Well, when I went out to get it, I bring in my, my can, or my cans, I think that was recycling also, I noticed that they hadn't done anything. So, I just left it there for a while. Well, the next day, I, of course, had to have some trash, and I wasn't going to put it in the blue bin, so I noticed it was still out there. So, I called him again, and he said, well, it wasn't necessarily that day, but it was going to be on one of the days coming up. Well, in the meantime, my lid is getting more split open. So, I patiently waited. Next week came around, I put it, put it out, as requested. They still didn't do anything. Actually, they did. They made it worse. The hinge actually came off of the hinge, or the lid came off of the hinge. How it did that, I don't know. It looks like I could put it back on if I had the right tools, but I, I didn't. So, I called him again, and I complained this time, and he said, I don't remember, I can't remember exactly what they said, but I said, it's getting worse, you know, I need this, because it's not going to hold up very long. So, one day last week, I went out to get my mail, and lo and behold, there's a new trash bin sitting in the street. Oh, the trash fairy must have brought it, I guess. So, I brought it in, transferred out what was in the old bin into the new bin, and this past week, I put them both out, with the broken one sitting sideways, so that the driver could obviously see that it was broken. Well, it's still sitting on my curb, as of right now. I called him again, and just chewed him out royally, because I said, I have no idea when you're going to pick it up, when I should put it out. Nobody has contacted me. Nobody has emailed me, so I don't know what's going on. So, I'm leaving it there, and hopefully, maybe, it will miraculously disappear, just like the new one appeared. Well, as of like quarter to six, when we came down here, it was still sitting there. Now, this to me is not good customer service. What I passed around to you, after all this, I went to the city website to see if I could find a local contact number. Well, on that particular website, you notice that all the recycling centers are listed, and finally, down towards the end, almost to the last paragraph, you get a mention of waste management. Well, I think that needs to be corrected. Waste management needs to be put up at the top, somewhere with those other ones. Now, the, the contact number that's listed there is a 661 number, and it finally gets me to the same people, only maybe a little bit faster than their 800 number. So, we don't have a local contact number. I suggest that maybe the city org, or whoever should, is in charge of looking at this franchise, take a look at it, see if they are in violation of their, their franchise, because it's my understanding that at one time, when they first started out, we had somebody right here in Ridgecrest that we could contact, and that's not the case now. So, I see my time is up. I had a couple other things. Maybe if there's time left over, I'll come back and do that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Well, Elmore Jackson. I'm here to speak on behalf of one of your citizens in town. I happen to go to Pizza Hut, which I love, the new Pizza Hut. Thank you for making sure it's open. But she said, if I was coming to the city council meeting, that maybe I could talk to the city council about possibly having something in this town for kids. She has grandkids. They moved here. Her kids go to, one of her grandsons go to school here. He likes to play pool. Obviously, there's no place for the kids to play pool in this town unless you're over 21. They're trying to qualify for a tournament that's outside of the area, and they want to go to Louisiana.
Pizza Hut is?
No, one of the lady that I met in Pizza Hut.
Okay.
She was, she was a citizen from here, and we just got to talking. I didn't get her name, and I do apologize for that, but we just started talking about no places for her to have birthday parties, or, she's originally from Sacramento, she's used to Chuck E. Cheese and, and areas that you can take your kids to and have birthday parties or have fun, and she says the grass is really dry here, you can't go to the park. But she said, if I go to the city council, can you please mention to the city council that, maybe they need to take a look at doing things for kids? There's nothing here for kids to do. They go out of town every single weekend to Lancaster, to Victorville, anywhere that they can go to take their grandkids. She drives all the way back to Lone Pine, picks up another grandson, takes them down south, and they, to go play pool, so they can qualify for a tournament that they're interested in, in playing in. So, I told her, sure, I'll go and talk for you, if, you know, if you want me to, and I really do think that the city does need to look at doing things for kids here. There is nothing for kids to do here. I get that. I, I've been, I spend a lot of time here, don't get me wrong. I'm not just for city council meetings. I do spend a lot of time here, because it is close to my home, and there really isn't anything for kids to do. So, I just wanted you to know that there is a citizen out there who doesn't make it to the meetings, but she would like for the city council to take a look at doing more things for younger-aged children.
And specifically for kid, for pool tournaments, right?
Well, not just, not just pool tournaments.
More things.
Yeah, for everything. There should be more events for kids in this town.
Okay.
You have a lot of schools. You know, you have a lot of kids that are in this, in this town, and they don't have anything to do, they have nowhere to go. And she says, every weekend, they have to go to Lone Pine, pick them up, go somewhere else out of town in order for their kids to practice, play in pool, so that they can qualify for a tournament, and they want to go to Louisiana and play.
Can I invite you to invite the community that loves to talk to you to attend the Quality of Life meeting, where we can discuss those kind of things openly, of things that we like to bring, other things we like to bring into Ridgecrest?
We have a workshop coming up on the 26th of this month for Quality of Life, too, so.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm George Golson, chairman for the Tembisha Shoshone Tribe, and I've had the opportunity to be here a lot, and I, I got to see the city, honor veterans, honor a lot of things that take place with veterans, and the Navy, because the Navy's the jewel of the city, is what the, what the comments are that I read. I just find it very interesting that, maybe it's selective, I'm a Navy vet. I served my country during the Reagan administration. I came here to this base in the 80s, and I serve because I value America, our way of life, our freedoms, and our rights. And it's just amazing to me that, maybe because I'm from a tribe that, maybe the veteran status doesn't reach to tribal members. It's not by everybody, don't get me wrong. There are some fantastic people here. And I consider myself a very wealthy man, not a rich man, but a wealthy man. I'm wealthy with friends and family, and I value that more than money. I guess my question, or my comment, would be, and maybe to lead into that, is that the city and the city council vote a lot on agreements. You guys approve agreements, you enter agreements, you, you do these things with different entities. And my assumption, which, which I hope I'm accurate, and my assumption is that, whenever the next city council comes in, they don't undo those agreements, is what I'm, I'm assuming. Otherwise, the city would have a reputation where they would have a problem getting business. Well, the tribe has an agreement, and, and everybody's well aware of this agreement, and this agreement was passed by a city council of a three to two vote. We're all aware of the controversy and the lengthy discussions that took place. I do understand that this is a controversial issue, but the city did make the commitment and to have people on the city council attempt to undermine the agreement, has me wondering, where is the integrity? I understand that it is, it is tough. I know this. I'm in politics. I'm in tou, it's, it's a tough position, and I'm in a minority politics situation. So, when I go to Washington, DC, I deal with these issues, because sometimes Native Americans are viewed in a different light. I don't think that's happened here on a large scale. Like I say, there's, there's some fantastic people in town. I'm very welcomed in a lot of places, and I love that. That's great. But when I am referred to, or my tribe's referred to as a foreign nation, that's a problem. Because I fought, I, I dedicated some of my life for this country. I just had, we just had a World War II vet die. He was a tribal member, World War II vet. This man was amazing. He got a letter from this guy when he got out of the military, says, I'd like you to come work. come work for me and do some cartoons." That letter was from Walt Disney, he was an amazing man, and he sacrificed part of his life for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans, not just non-Native Americans, but every American. And on the agenda, which I know was pulled, which I understand agendas, I understand how that all works, and sometimes, it's not an easy decision to make, and I don't hold ill will towards anybody for that, because I just understand how it works. But I would hope as we move forward, that the commitment that the city made by approving this document is upheld by not only this city council, but future city councils, because we have integrity as a tribe, and we expect our partners to have the same. So, I hope that we can develop a better relationship, maybe a more open relationship, to move our project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else, Colonel?
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Mike Neal. I refrain from responding to some of the prior statements at this particular time of the prior speaker. Would like to talk about an issue that's probably of some interest to everybody in the room, at least the property owners in the city of Ridgecrest, and this would be a property tax assessment, being actively pushed by city staff at this particular time, which we have had zero discussion about in council meetings. I had a letter to the editor where I addressed this, I talked about it at the last council meeting, and now I'm going to talk about part two of this, which is the desires of Parks and Recs Department and city staff, or what they would like to do to improvements and things to Leroy Jackson Park, one of our oldest parks in town. So, I'll just basically kind of read, and you can see this, you'll see this in the papers, but I'll emphasize a few things here. They're proposing a total of $3.3 million of improvement slash maintenance things for Leroy Jackson Park that they want your money for. Yeah, $3.3 million for the one park. So, they got $200,000 for a new bathroom, and I'm calling this an extremely high cost, and no factual basis for this cost was given on this at all, for constructing a new bathroom. Keep in mind, they paid $300,000 for a small bathroom at the Ballfield Park, $600 a square foot, if you can believe it. Along the same lines, they want to add $450,000 worth of additional field lighting, and $200,000 for more fencing, I don't, who knows where, I don't know. Now, how about this one? Try this out, $1 million to retrofit field lighting, not add lighting, not do major changeouts, retrofit, a million bucks. Are we taking, being taken to the cleaners here? I don't know, all I have to say, they must be kidding with that kind of a number. Then it goes on, $150,000 well repairing maintenance, for in the other parks, they talked about $70,000. Where does the number come? Come from? We don't know, they didn't give us any estimates from contractors whatsoever. Now, we go on, they want to add two new softball fields for a total of a million, a million more dollars, and another soccer field for 600,000 more dollars. Where are those going to go, and where's the justification for the need for them? Haven't heard a word, no discussion up here, nothing. One presentation on December 20th, right before Christmas, when most people probably aren't going to be here. Then you got $80,000 for undefined things they call site furnishings, and maybe some more shade, and there's all kinds of trees at Leroy Jackson, I don't know where the shade's supposed to go. Why do these, why do we need these? Again, no information was given. Then we got things like turf maintenance, resurfacing the parking lot, the tennis court, so forth and so on, remodeling the bathroom, those probably do need to be done, but again, no real solid cost estimates were given for this, just numbers thrown out, you know, high numbers. When you throw numbers out without cost estimates, you always throw out really high numbers, but that's okay in some instances, but when you say, "We want to tax you based on this," that's not okay. So, the list, like I said, comes out, it's $3.3 million they're asking for, what I come up with is $360,000, what looks like justifiable need for that. So, does anything sound off here? Do you see some discrepancy between 360,000 and 3.3 million? I hope so, and I hope you think about it, and I hope you start asking some questions, because, like I said, we haven't been given the justice of having public meetings to discuss this, and have them justify before the public all these wish lists. So, there you go. Next week, I'll be talking about another $2.5 million they want to spend on the Curran McGee Ballfields, which they've just spent $2.5 million on this year.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
I'm just going to pass.
My name is Ricky Fielding, mayor Breeden and members of the city council. At around this time two years ago, the city was in the middle of negotiations for the sale of several Ridgecrest Business Park lots. Instead of a sale agreement, it turns out that we ended up with, first, with the existing municipal services agreement. The agreement provides for certain payments from the tribe in exchange for the letter that the city sent to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and it requires the city to respond to inquiries about the tribe's trust application in a manner that is consistent with that letter. Nothing in the MSA requires the city to lobby the federal government on behalf of the tribe, and nothing in the record since it was signed warrants such an action. On the contrary, there are many issues from those early presentations, the resulting MSA, and in the recent record about which the city should be concerned. In material presented at city council meetings and during the ensuing public discussion, the council and public were led to believe that the tribe would be seeking a fee to trust action under discretionary acquisition rules, that require, these rules require consultation with local government, they require public comment, NEPA review, concurrence from the governor, and a formal determination by the Secretary of the Interior that the acquisition would not harm the local community. The city entered into the MSA expecting those protections to apply to the project, but after only a few short months, we learned that the tribe is attempting to short circuit each of these protections through a mandatory acquisition. Recent disagreements with the tribe over water export, additional trust lands, and marijuana sales only highlight the importance of approaching the project and the government-to-government relationship between the city and the tribe with caution. Chairman Golson is on record stating the tribe will, that the tribe will never sell, carry, condone, or have any type of cannabis activity in the city of Ridgecrest, and has apparently called these concerns ridiculous. Yet, my understanding is that the tribe remains unwilling to amend the MSA to address these concerns. The same portion of the Timbisha Homeland Act that the tribe says authorizes a mandatory acquisition also instructs the secretary to obtain a pertinent water rights for the parcel in question. In one council meeting I attended, Chairman Golson remarked that as if he expected an invitation at any moment, that he hadn't yet been invited to participate on the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Sustainability Authority. In 2015, the Agua Calienti Band of Cahuilla Indians won a lawsuit for Aboriginal water rights against the Coachella Water District. Concerns over water rights, especially with state conservation mandates and the expected overdraft in our water basin, are hardly ridiculous. Early in the negotiations between the city and the tribe, the tribe had their eyes on an additional 38 acre parcel behind Home Depot for use as a housing development, and sought city financing for the convention center phase of the project. Just up the road in Bishop, the Bishop Paiute Tribe has been fighting for more than three years to evict its own tribe members from land adjacent to their casino in order to proceed with a $30 million expansion. Private land ownership near a casino can also be problematic, because as Chairman Golson put it, there's one entity in the state that can sue the tribe, the city of Ridgecrest. One landowner in Northern California had no legal recourse as sewage from the neighboring casino's broken septic system leaked onto his land. Concerns about the tribe's plans for other properties within the city seem quite well-founded to me. The Timbisha Tribe already has a 50,000 square foot grow facility in Death Valley Junction, and when the Lai Pay Nation of Santa Isabel closed their similarly sized casino in an out-of-the-way part of San Diego County, they turned their facility into a high-tech medical marijuana operation. With multiple tribes catching the 420 bus and California's recent legalization of recreational marijuana, concerns about the tribe's approach to the city's cannabis ordinance, adopted after the MSA was signed, seemed downright reasonable, not ridiculous. As the basis upon which the MSA was negotiated crumbles away, and with Chairman Golson dismissing legitimate concerns as ridiculous, our mayor should not be lobbying in Washington on their behalf. Instead of worrying about protecting the tribe and its investors, the city must finally begin to focus restoring the rightful off reservation discretionary acquisition process, and on representing all of the concerns and interests in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment?
Lori Acton, address is on file. I've been quiet a long time, I'm done being quiet. All right, let's cover some of this, shall we? Cannabis, water, territory, all of this was covered in the MSA. So, if you need it broken down to understand that, I'm happy to help you with that, but the attorney broke it down, the city attorney, the tribal attorney that the city hired, Jack Drimm, broke it down for you. It's all been covered. They cannot grow cannabis, they cannot take water, they cannot do any of those things that they're being accused of doing. As far as calling, well, I'm sorry, but you really, really irritated me, Mr. Neal, because you sit here and you impugn people that you have no, you don't know them, and yet you impugn their integrity and basically call them liars because you can't trust their word. You know, you stand here and make stuff up, but that's okay, apparently. Now, I am so frustrated, the tribe did a mandatory fee to trust, that's how they started out, they had no idea, I'm sorry, I said that backwards there, they started out with the fee to trust process, they had no idea about the mandatory. That came after the fact. We'd done the agreement in 2016, that happened in 2017, they immediately notified the city when they were notified. City wasn't open on Friday, they had to wait till Monday, but they did notify the city immediately when they were notified. Let's see, what else? Oh, all these scare tactics with the other tribes and things that have happened, yes, they sound horrible, but you need to go and look at all of the facts, not pick and choose the ones that just sound bad because you want to compare apples to oranges, because that's not the case. I'm talking about a very small casino, we're talking about independence, we're talking about jobs for our community, we're talking about all those things that we need here, because for a town our size, in case you forgot, we should have between 30 and 50 million dollars in a general fund budget of how much? Maybe 12 on a good day? I mean, it's hard to operate, and the more that the base shifts stuff to the city, the more the city picks up but with no funding, because our top three employers don't pay taxes, remember that, and how do we make our money? Because the base doesn't, the hospital doesn't, the school district doesn't. So, how are we supposed to survive? I'd really like answers. You're willing to exploit the Patrick Liff Festival, hey, let's do that, let's bring in 50,000 visitors, I believe is what was said, but we don't want to help them be independent and have, you know, education for their youth and send them to college, or have hospitals, or any of those types of things. I mean, I'm highly, highly disappointed in the behavior of a couple of council members, because it calls into question what was done on the previous council, and we had integrity, and we did things the right way, and we did our due diligence, because it's not just you three that were on the previous council that's going to look back, it reflects on all five of us. And so, to not carry out your word, that's hard for me, because that reflects on me too, and I won't have it. So, do what you need to do, but remember what we did here. Yes, we knew we made a decision that would change the face of Ridgecrest forever, and that was a big decision, we did not take it lightly, and we did not just skim it or rush it through. We didn't. We did our due diligence, we did our homework. Keep the commitment that you made, which was to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Dave, we did say that we were going to limit it to each person for five minutes, and if we went over the hour, we weren't going to have any more comment. Where are we, Ricka? We're nine minutes out from the hour.
I'm sorry, mayor, but in the past, when things, when people had other things, and everybody else was done, and it wasn't, you not over the hour, they were permitted to come up and speak.
Please let me finish. I asked Ricka how much time we have left. We have nine minutes, you have your five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll pick up where I left off. While I was on the city webpage putting out that recycling information, I noticed the survey that was listed there, apparently having to do with establishing the Parks and Recreation District, or something like that, I forget. So, I went through it, and I'm going to insult somebody right now, but that is not a survey. There was two things on it. Am I a resident? Yes. And then it went to, how do you rate the priority of these 13 items having to do with the parks? Well, I went through it, and I kept changing the 13, because it was, other things that I could see needed to be more than that, but there was no option for me to say, "I don't care, this is not important, I don't approve." So, that is not a survey, somebody is asking the citizens to prioritize the items that the city wants to do. So, either redo it or ignore it, one or the other, it's not a survey. The other thing that I wanted to address was that, the item 10. It appeared to me that what the tribe is proposing is to pay the mayor's way back to Washington DC to testify for this, in the Secretary of the Interior's department, or the Interior Department, Bureau of Indian Affairs, whatever. If they want to send somebody with the opposing you, I'll be happy to go, but there's one catch, I don't travel by myself anymore, so it'd actually be two people, unless somebody else wants to go in my place. Excuse me. Mr. Golson, I've said this to you privately, I don't know if you remember it or not, I want to say it publicly here, so everybody can hear it. If you were doing something else besides a casino down there, I'd be behind you 100%, unless there was something funny going on, you know, but other than that, no, I'm against it. And I think a lot of other people are, and some of the people, Lori, some of the representatives up there are representing our views. Now, as far as, excuse me, I've got a deep frog down there somewhere. Things to do for kids, do you ever take them out of town and go to the forest, or to the lake, or teach them how to fish, or go camping? You know, that's what this area has been primed for over the years. That's partly why I came up here. Do you ever teach your kids how to entertain themselves, be creative? You know, I've heard this argument, there's nothing for the kids to do around here. Well, I'm funny, but there's a lot of people, a lot of kids that grew up around here, including my two, and one of my grandsons partially, so I don't know how they survived, but they did, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? All right, sir, you can come back, you've got how many minutes, Ricka?
We have six minutes.
Six minutes, you can have five, thank you, sir.
A minute more than I need. Actually, I just wanted to clarify a couple things. Number one, there is no lobbying taking place, the decision was already made here, we're not asking you to do anything that's out of line with the MSA, that decision was already made, so we're just, just wanted to clarify that point, and we do our own lobbying, we don't actually need the city to do that on our behalf. For clarification purposes, it was only to have a discussion with the man who's making the decision, to help ensure that the city is getting what it wants, is more what it would be. So, that way, you get to check with the man who's making the decision, so that way, you are protecting yourselves, is more what it would have been. are protecting yourselves, is more what it would have been. So the opportunity is that. So if you don't want to take that opportunity, I can understand the pressure. But that's what that was. And this, and some of the comments that were made up here are comical because they're so far away from the truth that you can't even squeeze any truth out of that. If you wring it out real tight, you couldn't get any truth out of that. And comparing apples with apples is a real good thing. And I don't have a problem with that. And I appreciate, I really appreciate Dave's candor. Because I like that. You know, if you don't like what I'm doing, tell me. Because that's the way I function. I don't like this, well, you know, yeah, we really like what you're doing, but not really. That I have a problem with. So I really do appreciate Dave, and he did tell me that in private. And I'll tell you, and I told him, if there was any other industry that we could get into that would produce those returns, we would. And the cannabis thing is blown way out of proportion. Yeah, San Isabel, yeah, they did that. There's lots of other tribes that are going to do it, too. There's lots of people in the state of California that are doing that. Why should other people be left out because of their ethnicity? Unacceptable. We're, our people are also citizens of California, just like everybody else. We should be able to take advantage of everything like everybody else. Why should we be singled out because we live on federal land? And if you've ever been to the reservation, you would know it's not an oasis. We don't have big mansions. We can't even afford to bury our people. But, you know, that's not taken into consideration. And us being compared to other tribes, the water issue, I can't remember the tribe, that's a whole different issue than we've got. And I don't know, is there gold in the water here? There's got to be something in the water that's so precious that there's a big fear that we're going to take a lot of it. It's a big fear we're going to take, we're not going to export water. We've got water. What are we going to do? Is there a big market for water here that we can bottle water and sell it? Because if there was, somebody else would already be doing, I think they do it in Owens Valley. It's called Crystal Geyser. And seeing where that's at, at the side of the dry lake, I'm not drinking that. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Like I said, I don't have any animosity towards anybody because, quite frankly, I just can't take the effort to do that. And I'm not that kind of person, anyway. It's just too much to try to remember why I didn't like somebody. Or too much to, just to hang on. And that just sucks the life out of me, and I don't want to do that.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? We have how many minutes left?
Two.
Two minutes. Anybody who wants two minutes. Okay, I see none, so we will then go to council announcements. Let's start down here. Lindsay?
Yes, I have one. March 23rd through 25th, Cornerstone Bible Church will be hosting a creation seminar, and they have a special guest speaker coming, so all are welcome to attend that.
Thank you, Paul. Mike, or Eddie?
Yes, on tomorrow at 2:00, we will have the East Current Air Pollution Control Director's meeting upstairs, and it's open to the public. And we meet every other month on the second Thursday of the month.
Thank you. Mike? Nothing. I would ask that you all watch the first part of the meeting on the video. Okay, thank you. Under consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, those, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have the item, any item polled?
I forgot to make one announcement, sorry. Chief McLaughlin had asked me to announce the basketball game. Murray Middle School and our police department are going to be playing in a game this Friday at 6:30 at Murray.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anybody wish to have any item polled from the consent calendar on the council? Any public wish to poll items on the consent calendar?
I do. I'd like to apply for a vote, Mayor.
Please, okay. So a motion, then? Is there anybody else? Okay, so we will approve, motion to approve items two and, I'm sorry, two and three.
So moved.
Second. Go ahead and use your voting pads, please. We have five yeses, motion carries.
Okay, so we will now then go to item number four. Sir? Take your time. We've got your time. We're ready to go when you are.
First of all, Bard Lauer, Public Works Director for the city.
Is the mic on?
I wish to apologize for having to pull this item.
Bard?
I'm sorry.
I don't know that the mic's on down there. Can you?
It is.
It is?
Well, I don't know if it's working, but I know that
You might have to get closer.
Maybe if I get a little closer, that would help. I want to apologize first for pulling item number four. What has happened, well, the item itself is approval by the council to, for two grants, one for $184,000 approximately. This will be available, money available in November, and one for $41,000 and change. That's the SGR, which is state of good repair, available in April. The problem with it is, is one of the documents in the item was an earlier document that noted that both of them were for operational purposes. The $41,000 for the state of good repair is not. We will be purchasing a new gas pump with the money to allow, what happens right now is when the maintenance guys are at work Monday through Thursday, it's not a problem. When they're off on Fridays, quite often the pump breaks down. And when we need to fuel the transit fleet, it becomes a problem. Somebody else has to come in and fix it again. So the spreadsheet that was, that's sitting up here, and it was handed out to council, states what the change was. You look clear to the right-hand side, you'll notice that one says operations and one says capital, capital, correct? Capital? One says capital. So that's the change, the capital. One used to say operations as well in the document that was circulated. That's the only change that we made.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from council on this item? Any questions from public on this item? Motion?
Move approval of item four?
Second. Second.
Go ahead and vote. Oh, he's got to be, slide up, there you go. We have five yeses, motion carries.
Working real good tonight.
Thank you, sir.
We fixed a lot. IT's been
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, we are skipping five, six, seven, and eight, and we are going to item number nine.
Guess who that is again? That would
You do, sir.
We are asking council to retroactively approve an amendment to the professional services contract with Will Dan. We're asking for an additional 70, I'm sorry, $75,716.75. The reason we're asking retroactively, and again, I will apologize for that immensely. I do not like bringing retroactive items to council. But during the construction, what happened was is that there were more utility problems that we found when we were constructing it, as well as we did not have the personnel needed to, I'm going to make sure I get the words right, to inspect a cured-in-place pipe installation. So we had to increase the consultant inspection from half-time to full-time during this, and that added the $75,000 plus dollars.
Where does it come from?
We finalized this contract several months ago, right?
That I can't answer.
Isn't this, this is phase one, right?
Right, well, with the contractor. This is with the inspection and, sorry, construction management, not for the building of
Okay, we finalized the contract with the contractor.
Well, okay, before my time, so I'm assuming yes. Yes, okay.
And when did we become aware of this?
I found out about it not too long after I got here. And we sat down and had a meeting sometime late January and decided that we should move forward with this. And this was my first shot at writing a staff report, and it took me more than one try. I apologize. And that's why it took a little longer to get it here.
Okay, is there any other questions? Ryan, you look like you have something you want to say.
Yes, this came up and was handled by Mr. Spear. Towards the end of his tenure, they were working with Will Dan. There was a, some out-of-scope necessary approvals to be able to complete that, the replacement of the sewer line on Church Street prior to the paving. This wasn't known to Mr. Spear at the time. This was another matter that it came up through staff, working with the inspector. They expanded it. There was, they never came back to council for approval of the additional scope at the time. Like I said, this was just necessary work that had to be done, so this is just a cleanup. This does come out of the wastewater fund. If we were to come back, we'd have to have it approved anyway. Because this was, if we had brought it back earlier, it still would have had to have been approved for us to continue to move forward on the project. There was stuff that was found during the scope of when they were doing the inspection that needed expanded oversight.
I understand that. It just seems kind of weird that it went on for several months ago and we're just now
Staff had been negotiating with Will Dan for a significant amount of time. I know that our attorneys were brought in and consulted on how to resolve this matter, and this is what the result of those discussions with the attorney Will Dan came up with.
Again, I do apologize for being retroactive. I don't much care for bringing retroactive items.
This happened before you were here.
It's still, still mine, so
I know, it's your, it's your department.
Is there any other questions from council?
This is the final invoice. This won't be coming back.
Well, that's good, $75,000.
Will you look at item, page 11, there's an item in there that says, "If accurate flow data is not available for the project area, flow monitoring will, may be necessary to identify average and peak flows." That paragraph. Can you tell me, is, if the, if the item we have is now accurate flow data?
I cannot, but I can find out for you.
Okay, it doesn't necessarily change what's done because this is already done. I'm just concerned that if accurate flow data is not available for the project area, do we have, how does it change what we're going to either approve or not approve?
It wouldn't change, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yes, sir.
It would not change whether we need to approve this or not. The work has been done. Will Dan, it's the right thing to do to pay them. But I will find out if accurate flow data is available.
Okay.
If it wasn't flowing, you wouldn't know.
Yeah. We just went from a part-time inspector to a full-time inspector out of necessity.
Okay.
It's also, just to bring it up, it's very hard to come back to a council in the middle of a construction, no, it's too, it's late. No argument at all. But it's hard to come back during the middle of a construction project when we need to make a change if it increases the scope of a project. Now, it should certainly have come back earlier, but it would have had to have been retroactive one way or the other.
It just took, it just took a while with the attorneys to come to this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any other council comment? Motion?
So moved. Second.
Five yeses. Five yeses, motion carries. And when it turns off.
I think you're still turned off.
Yeah, it's, motion carries, five, five yeses.
Okay, item number 11, we are skipping 10. All right, sir?
This is my public, first public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing. I believe that's the way that this works. This is a public hearing to determine and establish the finding of unmet needs for our transit system. We basically, I wanted to, at this time, just make a quick comment on what unmet needs is. So Kern County in Resolution 90-04 defined unmet needs and reasonable to meet as unmet needs. An unmet transit need exists if an individual of any age or physical condition is unable to transport himself or herself due to deficiencies in the existing transportation system. Excluded are, one, those requests for minor operational improvements, and two, those improvements funded and scheduled for the implementation of the following fiscal year. So if we've already planned to do them next year, it doesn't need to be added to this. So reasonable to meet, operational feasibility, the requested improvement must be safe to operate, and there must be adequate roadway for transit vehicles, duplication of service, the proposed service shall not duplicate other transit services, timing, the proposed service shall be in response to an existing rather than a future need, and D, service must meet the legally required fare box ratio with fares close to fare or similar service. The public is allowed to comment. We have Mr. Bob Snotty from Kern Cog here to answer questions that I can't. So we'd be happy for both of us to entertain questions at this point in time, from both council and the public.
Okay, is there council comments or questions? I'm assuming there are none. Are there public questions or comments on this item?
Or statements of unmet need.
Or statements of unmet need. I see none from anybody. Then we will take a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
It's a shame you drove all the way over from Bakersfield just for this.
I get handsomely rewarded to do it. And I enjoy coming over here anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you spending your time and our tax dollars to come over here and listen to us. Thank you. Okay, the item then, as we come to committee reports. City Org.
City Org got canceled because of lack of a quorum.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I was not able to be there, and I understand one of our planning commissioners were not able to be there.
That's correct.
So we will have that meeting next time.
If you ever need someone to fill in, too, please
I didn't know until about 15 minutes beforehand.
No problem.
Okay, Finance Committee.
It's the third Monday we
You just met.
Okay, Infrastructure.
Did we meet?
You met last week.
Was it last week? Oh, that's right, because we had it on the fourth Monday.
Yeah.
And I didn't bring my notes. You have your notes, Lindsay?
Peggy attended for me.
That's right. We only had a couple items on the agenda, and I think Stan covered them very well.
We only had a couple of items on the agenda, and I think Stan covered them very well.
I don't think, even his, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I think we're having problems.
I think we're-
I think CalPERS was on the agenda, and then the mid-year budget review were what, were discussed.
Yeah, we discussed the, the problems with CalPERS and how it's going to affect our budget over the next several years.
And we have a workshop coming up on that, on the 28th at six-
The 28th, and Council Chamber is at 5:00.
And it's open to the public?
Yeah, it'll be a workshop regarding possible bonding of our unfunded actuarial liabilities with our retirement system, CalPERS.
That is the Wednesday after the last council meeting. Okay. Parks and Rec.
Infrastructure, did you want to do that one first?
We just did that one.
No, we didn't. Finance, we haven't done infrastructure.
I'm sorry. My apologies, we skipped one. Okay, Infrastructure.
Do you have your notes on that one?
I don't have my notes, but I can kind of do some of it from memory. We heard from Mr. Lauer on our future paving program and more on the Spurry Seal machine, and we also heard about, we discussed some details about lighting in landscaping districts. We did not hear about the triangle parking lot, but that's in negotiations, I think it was on the agenda, and then we also got an update on the wastewater treatment plant, and I, I think that was-
That was the last one.
Everything.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Okay. All right, now Parks and Rec.
We did not have a meeting, because we will be having a workshop at the end of the month for the assessment district, and that is planned to be on Monday, the 26th, so that will be a busy week. So, and that will be open to the public, and a notice should be getting posted in the near future about that, as well as advertising. But it will be a workshop, hoping to gather more public input on the assessment district.
Thank you. Okay, Youth Advisory.
We, we will meet, uh-
Next week.
Yes.
Second, yeah.
Next week.
At noon. Okay, Action?
We will meet this month.
And that's at 4:00?
That's at 4:00.
Okay. Hurry CVB.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, they've changed this from the first Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wallace, and then, uh-
I corrected it on the next agenda. I didn't have the information for this one when it was posted, but it's, it's on the second Wednesday at 9:00 AM.
Second, and it's still, Kermit G., Senator.
Okay, Economic Development?
We'll meet next week.
Next week. Okay, the next item is Other Committees, Boards, or Commissions. Anybody have anything? Okay, City Managers Report.
Only just a reminder, just the workshop for the park assessment, as well as the person funded actual, actuarial liability, that's all we have right now.
Okay. Future Agenda Items. Lindsey?
I have none at this time.
Wallace?
No.
Eddie?
I have none, Madam Mayor.
Mike?
We're gonna put 10 back on.
I had asked that item when I voted, that item to be back on as a discussion and action item, and it will be on our next agenda. Okay, any others? Okay, Mayor and Council Items. Lindsey?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment about something that was said during public comment. I just wanted to read for everyone the definition of integrity. Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness, the state of being whole and undivided, the condition of being unified, unimpaired, or sound in construction, internal consistency, or lack of corruption in electronic data. I just wanted to say that I think some, I don't think that there's been any actions of our council that have not had integrity here, and I would say that the person questioning our integrity should actually consider their own integrity, because they did violate the law, and that was clarified by our attorneys to that person. So, by voting in the casino and then immediately taking a job with them, and then presenting themselves publicly before us, trying to sway our decisions, that was not, that was not upholding integrity. So, I don't appreciate saying that I don't have integrity, because that is not true.
I second that motion.
In, in all fairness, she did not take a job immediately after voting for the casino. She went for reelection. She was not reelected, and a few months after that, she took the job. So, that was several months after she voted for the casino that she got the job with the tribe.
I'm sorry. I guess that instance was with Protexa. This instance with the casino was, there was a little bit of a time delay, but it was still not, she still violated law, and to say that I don't have integrity, I don't appreciate that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, others? Wallace, did you have anything? Mike? Eddie?
I just wanted to thank staff for working out all the bugs in our voting system that we have, that we have been dealing with for a couple of meetings. Appreciate you all, your hard work and dedication, staff, for all that you do.
Okay, thank you. Under, under my council comments, I'd like everyone to make sure that we understand where we are, and that we will come back at the next item, as Mike referred to next agenda, and have item number 10 on again with discussion and approval or lack thereof. And I did ask, I did make that comment, so please look at the first 15 minutes of our meeting at 5:00. Okay, any other discussion, comments? Okay, make a motion, we adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Okay, we adjourn. Thank you.